I got 9:08. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. Next is the approval of the agenda, and I would approve that as of 9:08 for start time.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted start time of 9:08 a.m. today.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes of 5:13 and 5:20.
I will make a motion to approve the May 13th and May 20th minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is approval of claims for 5:27 of 2020.
I'd make a motion approving the claims for payment dated 5:27 2020 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is utility permits. No utility permits. Secondary roads, what do you got for us?
Business as usual. The highway we've been working on, we've had it open every night, so I can't complain. Probably helps that it's too wet from all the rain on one of our roads, so we have two crews working on the highway, so, yep. We're fully staffed now. We got our last employee started yesterday, so, yep, business as usual for us.
All right, good.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next we have our motions for any proposed changes to zoning commission's recommendation. We have a list of the changes that we went through last Friday, and I would prefer taking them one at a time.
Okay.
So in Section 2, one of the changes, number one, was add setback to the distance from designated areas to be measured from the point of center of the turbine pole or tower.
I'd make, I'd, go ahead, Darrell.
I'm just going to remind everybody that Section 2 just deals with definitions.
Yep.
So we're just kind of defining some terms that are used throughout the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. I would make a motion to add the definition of setback, the distance from designated areas to be measured from the point of center of the turbine pole or tower.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is add the following language to the definition of dwelling.
I'd make a motion to add the following language to the definition of dwelling. Residence means a house or other building, including all structures attached to the building, which meets all the following criteria at the location of the intended residence. Sub 1, used as a place of habitation for humans on a permanent and frequent basis. 2, not readily mobile. 3, connected to a permanent source of electricity, a permanent private water supply or public water supply system, and a permanent domestic sewage disposal system, including a private, semi-public, or public sewage disposal system. 4, assessed and taxed as real property. If a house or other building has not been occupied by humans for more than six months in the last two years, or if a house or other building has been construction or moved, constructed, or moved to its current location within six months, the owner of the intended residence has a burden of proving that the house or other building is a residence.
All right, I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Just for, of consumption, that definition is, was currently used for CAFO, Iowa DNR, for the same purpose of setbacks, correct?
Correct.
So we have apples-to-apples definition of dwelling in both of our regulations.
Right, and so, so that Jessica, the director, has some continuity and enforcement. She's using the same definitions for both.
Right.
Regulations.
Good. Okay, good.
Did you want to see this, Renee?
I've got it.
No.
Yeah, I've got that.
Our public hearing's over. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 3, the following language to define as a non-dwelling unit.
I'd make a motion to add the following language to the definition of non-dwelling unit. Quote, "and that did or would otherwise require a building permit under county ordinance at the time of C-WEC application," unquote.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Again, this is just a continuity thing of making sure that everything is standard for Jessica Sheridan as she does her job going forward.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 4, property line.
I'll make a motion to add the following to the ordinance, or as a change. Property line, the legal boundary between real property with entirely separate owners. For purposes of calculating setbacks under this ordinance, a property line is not recognized between adjacent parcels owned by the same person or entity.
I would second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 5, private park.
I'll make a motion to add, for private park, means any taxable portion of the property not within the setback for dwellings in Table 1 herein, not used for agricultural purposes in the 18 months preceding the C-WEC application. Agricultural purposes includes row crap, cover crap, CRP, timber reserve, pasturing, or other, or the like, and not enrolled in any government subsidy program.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Darrell, that was a good way to put that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 6, public drainage system.
I'd make a motion to add the definition of public drainage system, which would mean, means public drainage infrastructure as well as private tile in the public right-of-way.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Section 3, Paragraph 3.
So Lance, this is the part of the ordinance dealing with the contacting of different boards, commissions, both from the federal level down, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I'd propose, make a motion proposing to change in Paragraph 3, change the first sentence to read, quote, "state, comma, federal, comma, and local agencies," unquote.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 8, add Iowa DNR.
I'll make a motion to add Iowa DNR to the list of agencies.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 9.
Make a motion to, to paragraph, or move to Paragraph 3, all the agencies listed in Paragraph 4.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10.
I'll make a motion to strike the following from the list of agencies, which would be the Harden County Firemen's Association and the Harden County EMS Council.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, again, for anybody that wasn't with us last week or didn't see the meeting or read the minutes, this was put in there because the city entities that are fire departments and EMS organizations would be contacted, and Harden County Firemen's Association and Harden County EMS Council are non-governmental agencies, so wouldn't have the delegated authority to have an opposing or, or, you know, an opinion on the development.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 11, Paragraph 4.
I'd make a motion, strike the remainder of Paragraph 4 as currently presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Section 6, number 12.
Go ahead, Renee.
I'd make a motion to add, quote, "and record date and depth of removal upon decommissioning," unquote.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? That just allows for people down the years to come that they're aware that something, a structure's in the ground.
Correct.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Section 7, number 13.
I'll make a motion to replace the last sentence with, quote, "fee shall be set by resolution," unquote.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Table 1, number 14, property line.
I'd make a motion, in Item 14, property line for commercial wax, change, quote, "the greater," change to, quote, "the greater of the manufacturer's recommended property line setback or 1.3 times total height," unquote.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 15, dwelling units.
I'll make a motion to approve for dwelling units, for commercial wax, change 3X, or change 3 times to .5 miles.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. No, I just was calling. Just make sure the procedure was in there.
Yeah. So, I'll talk on this one. We had a little bit of, or we had a lot of discussion on this during the work session, and this is what we decided to have written down.
Yep.
So, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion carries. Number 16, cemeteries.
I'd make a motion in Section 16 of cemeteries, delete that line.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 17, add a new category.
Yeah, I would make a motion to add a new category labeled as private park with setbacks the same as non-dwelling units as previously defined.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That was all we had on that for changes. Are we missing any?
I don't believe so, Lance.
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we have any that we'd like to add or subtract at this point? Or not subtract, but add?
I don't, I have nothing else, Lance.
No, neither.
Okay, well then, let's move to the next one, which is set date and time for the public hearing on the first consideration of the amendment to Article 23 of Ordinance Number 29 as modified by the Board of Supervisors. Suggested ti, or date would be June 17th.
I'd make a motion to set the time and date for the public hearing and first consideration of the amendment to Article 23 of Ordinance 29 as, did you say June 17th? June 17th, 9:02 a.m., large conference room of the Harden County Courthouse, or by Zoom due to the governor's declaration.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee. Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of Heartland Insurance Risk Pool renewal. This is our annual renewal. We went through it last week.
I'd make a motion to approve the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool as presented by Heartland Risk.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think we had a good discussion with Judy to look at, you know, where our liabilities are and the risk, and I think she gave us some good resources for room for improvement to keep reducing our risks and liabilities, and so I think it gives us a baseline in where we can go to, to be responsible and make some behavioral changes, and then make some other capital changes as well, so. It was a good discussion, and I think they do a good job of taking a complete and overall inventory. It's not just a snapshot, so I think it's a good decision.
When we have that company come in, we could have them come in more if you guys would like, just let me know. They charge us to come and do a complete inventory, so this inventory was done a couple of years ago. We just keep updating as new things come along. If you'd want another, if you'd want them to come back and do it again, I think it was Marshall and Swift, if I recall.
Yeah.
That comes in and does this. If you'd like them to come back earlier, just let me know, and we'll let them, we'll tell them that at the meeting.
Because I know there's things that we've done, we've implemented.
Exactly.
That have, you know, dramatically changed everything from the HVAC system, not having that cooling tower, saved a tremendous amount of money, and not having the boilers and those things, and then just our continued staff trainings, and in the digital age, addressing the cybersecurity issues, I think have all been strong ways to protect the county from risk and unneeded liabilities. So those decisions that are made on a daily basis, a lot of times have a significant trickle down to the bottom line for the county from a insurance and liability perspective.
Yep.
And I didn't, I don't think that anything's been revalued for a few years, so I'm not even sure that the value of the vestibule we added.
I believe that got added on.
It did?
Yes.
Okay.
But they didn't revalue the courthouse again.
Correct.
They just, they just used the.
And I know we talked about, you know, kind of lessons learned from Marshall County of, you know, true, you know, assessed value compared to what it would cost to rebuild something in the event of a disaster, and so having that foresight and, you know, considering making some changes, I think is an important thing to look at going forward as well.
Right.
So.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is an application for a liquor license.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Timbers Edge Wedding and Event on Highway S-56. It's a Class C liquor license commercial. It's for the, for a 12-month period of time, effective June 20th, 2020, to January 1st. It says 1,900.
I think our form is tough to fill in sometimes.
Oh, all right, so it would be for a year's time?
Yeah, the 12-month.
Yeah.
So I am excited to second this motion.
It's been moved and excitedly seconded?
Yeah. Hey, if you gotta be excited about something, it's exciting about, you know, a new endeavor in Harden County, so.
Any, any discussion? 12-month, starting 6/20 of 2020.
Great.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the engineer's employment contract and agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve the engineer employment contract and agreement with Engineer Taylor-Raw.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just want to, for the record, to make sure that all parties came to the table, and Mike Galloway from the county's HR contract was in and drafted the contract and made sure it was consistent with industry standards here in the state, and there was nothing unusual or outlandish in it, so I'm happy that we were able to come up meeting of the minds and, and secure great talent going forward.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're good for a while again. Next I have is change of status conservation.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Bridger Lawrence. He's a, he will be a seasonal park aide beginning May 26, 2020, at $11.50 an hour.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
He's, it's checked, he's temporary seasonal part-time.
Helping us out a few days a week. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is change of status on the sheriff's office.
I'd make a motion to approve the change of status for Sarah Robinson. It's a promotion at the sheriff's office. It's a communications supervisor at a rate of $46,000 a year salary position, effective May 18, 2020.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Hayden Rhodes as a correctional officer. It's a hiring for permanent part-time help at the hourly rate of $15 an hour.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have COVID-19 update. Do we have Thomas?
Thomas or Rocky on there?
Both.
Both.
Thomas, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and start. Moving forward, we're still getting PPE from the state of Iowa, and then as a organization, the State Emergency Management Association is having discussions on Friday about warehousing. I just signed off on the grant for supplemental, so we'll be, I'll be getting together with Rocky on what the PPE looks like for cities to open up, so this, this new grant is specific that we can purchase the PPE and hand sanitizers and things like that that the cities will need as government organizations to open, so I'll be having discussions with the commission members and with Rocky on the PPE we order, and then we also have the ability through this grant to build our stockpile for the future of what this looks like coming back at the fall. Not saying it's coming back, but we're.
We missed what you said there, Thomas, right at the end.
I'd say, I'm not saying that it is coming back, but we are looking at building the stockpiles, and that's kind of the eyes from Iowa Department of Public Health and Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did Rocky have anything to add? Rocky, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think the only other thing is, we are working, just looking at like the serology testing, and then also doing testing in long-term care facilities, so we're hoping to get more guidance from the state on how to go about doing that. The serology testing does also have some framework, so if you go to the State Hygienic Labs website, you can find it on there, and they did open up the Test Iowa sites, I believe, to anybody, so if you go online and take the Test Iowa survey, you should be able to go to one of their sites and get tested.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other updates on COVID? I don't believe so.
I think they pretty well covered it.
So let's go to public comments and unmute all. Now, anybody can unmute on themselves and speak.
Lance, this is Thomas. Can I make one more comment on the COVID?
Yeah, Thomas, go ahead.
Just a reminder, Rocky talked about the Test Iowa sites. Those are the sites that are listed, and they give you the appointment when you do the Test Iowa. Hanson Family Hospital is not one of the test sites. Marshalltown is our closest Test Iowa site, and when you go on that link and find out that you're able to get tested, you have to have an appointment and then go to one of those sites.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Lance, this is Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
I do have a public comment, but I also have a question.
Okay.
For Darrell, probably. Regarding the classification of a residence, if it hasn't been lived in for six months, how does that pertain to snowbirds, especially if, for whatever reason, medical or otherwise, they are not able to make it back right away?
I believe it said about six months within two years, so sporadically, if they've lived there for a total of six months within a timeframe of two years, then that counts as a residence.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard six months and a year.
I, you guys have to.
Is it within two years?
I remember.
I might, did I, did I say one year?
You said two years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Donna, you had two things. You had a public comment and a question.
Yes, I, I have a public comment here. There was an article in the Eldorick paper and in the Iowa Falls paper regarding, quote, "depopulating," unquote, of the confinement, which would be done with a ventilation shutdown The method of a ventilation shutdown consists of basically closing up the confinement building, allowing the gases to, to increase, possibly even putting in a heater, until the pigs are dead. On a hot, humid, windless day, when 1,650 feet from your house, they turn on the pip fans, putting all of that out into the air, they, Iowa Select claims that, well, it's just the odor. It is not harmful. But if they're using this to kill the pigs and the hogs and the piglets, I find it interesting that they claim it is not harmful to humans, when, as I walk out my door, I find it difficult to even breathe. That is simply a point I would like to make. I ask no question on it. I don't expect any of you to answer. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Julie Dunn.
Go ahead, Julie.
I had a question on Tyler's contract. What did, what was his salary before the, before this raise?
I think it was $93,000.
$96,000.
It was $96,000 previously.
Okay, so it's going up how much? What's the amount it's going up?
Sure, go ahead, Tyler.
Yep.
It's $108,000.
It's going up $12,000 to $108,000.
$12,000?
Correct.
Okay, so do, so you see no revenue issues in the foreseeable future where you can give, you can give raises like that?
Correct.
Correct.
No revenue issues?
No, not in any amount like that.
In Tyler's, in Tyler's department, 2/3 of his revenue does not come from us. There could be issues coming down the line I'm concerned about, don't get me wrong, but I'm also concerned that we need to keep a engineer employed.
Well, I'm sure that will do it. Thanks. Oh, okay, and I have a question for Rocky. I understand from the governor's conferences that we're supposed to be able to see the cases by zip code. Where can I find that? Where can I find that?
All right, and I'm looking at the website, I can see the county, but I have not seen it breaking out in zip code quite yet. I guess just keep checking that website, they update it basically every day, and just keep an eye on that.
It's not very user-friendly, oh, and how come during the meeting, like when I wanted to ask the question about Tyler's contract, that you weren't taking any questions or, so people can only comment at the end now, but, and have no input on issues on the agenda?
Julie, it's always been that way. We've just allowed people to speak in between, we're conducting the meeting, at the end of the meeting, I would go to public comments, I can put it at the beginning, but I believe more people have comments after the meeting than they do at the beginning. But the public meeting is for the Board of Supervisors. I do encourage questions, if you'd like to type your question, I could recognize it that way, but I'm not going to keep interrupting our meeting to take questions at any given time. Public hearings are where we speak, for the public to speak.
And so this has changed now since when meetings were, normal meetings were held in the conference room, because in the conference room, you know, we would raise our hand and you would call on us.
And some, and sometimes.
Agenda items.
And sometimes I did not call on you, I waited.
But generally speaking, you were very, I thought supervisors were very good on that, and now apparently things have changed, but thank you.
And earlier I had a question when it came to the, the motions of proposed changes, and I didn't want to take any public comments on that, because we're going to have a public hearing on it to take those questions. We're just making the motions based on our, our work session that we had.
But I'm not, I wasn't concerned about that, I didn't have any questions there, because I had, you know, been at the other meeting, so I didn't have any questions about that. When there's a public hearing, I, you know, that's when the public speaks, but.
Right, and when.
General supervisors meetings, but thanks.
But, but when it also, when it also came to Taylor's contract, you asked your question.
Yes, but there was no, okay, never mind.
Are there any other public comments? Any other business? Darryl.
I thought maybe you had made some explanation for why we were starting at 9:08 before the meeting started, I thought it might just make a more complete record if you went ahead and kind of revisited that here. Excuse me, I'm going to go over in my throat, or something. But if you, if you could just explain again on the record why we started at 9:08.
So we start, we started at 9:08, I read in the TC Daily that at 9:15, our agenda was not available to the public. At nine o'clock, our agenda is published on the front door. So that, that is the official notice, but also we've had people request, people of the press, that we, if requests, they need a timely agenda sent to them. 9:08 is when it was sent to them, we waited till 9:08 to start the meeting because of that. What is the definition of timely? Is eight minutes beyond the posting, following the, during the elections, following the holiday, and from the time posted on the door to the time sent, eight minutes and being interrupted in between doing that, answering a question for the public. It was eight minutes, so we decided to start eight minutes later, just based on that fact that the, that the people that had requested this to be on there got that courtesy. But the official posting is nine o'clock on the front door.
Right, and it was.
And it was.
Can you remind them that the website actually has a disclaimer that it's not the official.
Yeah, you have that here for me.
Agendas and minutes, and that it is not intended to be our compliance with chapter 21.
So, as our agenda goes, it says, please note, the Harden County website does not constitute the official record of all meeting agendas and minutes. The official record can be found in the county auditor's office. Meeting agendas are posted in accordance with the open meetings law in Iowa Code, Chapter 21. Minutes of the meeting, may, minutes of meetings held by other organizations but attended by members of the Harden County Board or Commission may not be available here. Is that what you want me?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, if the public is relying on that website posting, it may not appear until a little after nine o'clock, and I think in this particular instance, it might have been closer to 9:20.
Yes.
Thanks, I just wanted to make that part of the record.
Okay.
I did have one other.
Yep, go ahead.
Matter, and we could, kind of thinking about the, the motion on the dwelling units under table one, the setbacks, if we could circle back, I think it would help or be at least appropriate to have the same sort of notation on that setback item for dwellings as we have for property lines, in other words, that they can obtain a waiver.
Okay.
Good idea.
I think perhaps a motion to add to the dwelling setback, the same notation for property lines that expressly allows for waivers.
Okay. In section two, as suggested by County Attorney Meyer.
Actually, it would be in table one.
In table one, I would make a motion to add with noted relief by means of the variance board or a waiver obtained.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I guess I have one more question, I should have said this earlier, so I apologize, but I thought that at the end of our work session last Friday, we had decided on two times the total height from property lines, but it looks like, like we had to have that long discussion and said 1.3 times the total height, and then at the very end, we changed it back to two times total height, so I don't know if anybody remembers.
After you said that, I kind of remember that.
I remember two things. I, I remember what you're saying, but I don't recall that was, we went back to two times on that one, we went back to two on something else, but let me check here. That was public right of way. You're right. On the public right of way, we went back to two times, and communications or electrical lines, we went back to two times. I thought property lines we defined as the 1.3, or, I thought it was just on these two on the bottom, because we originally said 1.2, and then we went back to two times. I think we were just talking about those two, what do you guys recall?
I don't want to comment without looking at the minutes or watching the video, to be perfectly honest with you.
So would you like to recess before we adjourn?
Yes, I'd make a motion to recess to watch the video and determine if we need to make an amendment.
And reconvene at 11:30, 12 o'clock?
How about 12 noon?
At noon?
Okay.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to recess and reconvene at noon. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.